Join me in the pledge of allegiance speaks. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together today as a community. Lord, help us to find common ground and build bridges of understanding. May we be open to others' ideals and perspectives, grant us wisdom to see beyond our differences, give us strength and courage to have a voice. May we be engaged in the topics, active in our listening, and respectful in our speech. In Jesus' glorious name, amen.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
I move we make an addition to the agenda because of some scheduling. And I know David asked us, and we weren't ready to answer him about days that he was not going to be here for some things. I'd like to add a discussion about the zoning committee scheduling and dates and about the, maybe to also talk about the live streaming.
Where do you want to put it?
And I also have-
Wherever you want to put it. I'm not really concerned.
Probably ought to be in new business. Put new business. All right. And I also have a couple of amendments to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to add to new business Freeman's amendment to emergency department funding agreement. And then another to new business Bourbon County cameras and surveillance system.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to add one.
Okay.
Under new business, I'm going to put it as option A. A, so we're going to do it first. And that is for Eric, Public Works to come up and request the purchase of a-
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
I sent you the text earlier.
Oh, I must not have got it yet.
Yeah, we need to wait a week.
Wait a week?
Yep.
Okay, never mind. I don't have any changes.
Good.
So, I will make a motion that we accept the agenda with the changes made by the other two commissioners.
I second.
All right, Milburn?
Yes.
Is it mine?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Okay.
Just the one that was on my things, but you can use mine. I have one right here that's-
Okay.
No, I do not.
Approval of minutes from 5:525?
I read those minutes and I move we approve the minutes from 5:525.
Okay. I will second.
All right, Milburn?
Yes.
Right minutes?
Yes.
You have our-
Yes. Okay. Consent agenda, approval of 5:925 accounts payable totaling $58,537.22 and tax roll corrections.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Item A, approval of 5:925 accounts payable totaling $58,537.22 and B, tax roll corrections.
I second.
Milburn?
Yes.
You have our word.
Yes.
You have our word.
Yes. Old business, policy and procedures.
Okay. Item I, working compensation is me. I ask that we table that at the present time. I need some more information or need to do some more research. I move that we table this topic to June 2, 2025 meeting.
Okay.
That would require a second.
A second.
I was just writing my notes, I don't know. All right.
Milburn?
I guess.
You have our word.
Yes.
Right minutes?
Yes. Okay. Item A, two, letterhead.
I can take that one. Did you guys bring anything? You're busy, it's okay. So, this is, I'm sorry I didn't make copies. You guys can just look at it. I just kind of added some fonts and some size differences on here. And this is really, they do have the letterhead that's on the handbook and everything, that's just really large, and it's going to be really hard to put it on all the documents to make them look official with that photograph. And so, I think that we can have two, one with just a generalized font that we use the same every time. I'll let you look at these. These are just kind of similar to the one that you used the first time on your thing.
I'll let him look first.
There's a, you know, just some notes at the bottom there. And this is just so they can get to, as the forms come up and under review, they just add, just make them be in a form. Yes.
Okay. I like, I like what you got there. I like it.
Like one in particular?
I like the third one.
Okay. They're all very similar, so that's-
The third one with the bold lettering?
Bell. Is that the third one or four? Bell sixteen.
Oh, Bell MT sixteen. I'm not picky, you guys can hash it out.
Okay, nope, works good. Oh, oh, the third one would be, is it-
No, he said he wanted the Bell one.
The Bell, that one there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so it's Bell MT. And so, right here, I just have it set up as a sixteen font and then for the Bourbon County and then Kansas underneath, Bourbon County comma, and then Kansas underneath is a Bell MT twelve, so the same font, just makes it a little bit smaller, just to go to the top of the documents for uniformity, just so we can tell things are the official document. So, in this, I just propose we have two letterheads for Bourbon County, one for the books and cover pages and official documents, and the other for the documents where we shall use a letterhead style where it's feasible not to use such a large letterhead with the photograph, because I know you already have a lot of things printed with that on it, the photograph, don't you?
No, we currently have neither.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay. And so, I still think you can keep your current letterhead if it's, if it suits everybody. And then, just change the font of the Bourbon County to match, so where it has the photograph and then it just says Bourbon County underneath it, it can match this. So, again, uniform and they're all the same. So, I move that we adopt the Bell MT for the letterhead, just type Bourbon County, comma, Kansas underneath, and the Kansas, depending on what size they need to make it, they can address those, but the Kansas should be a size of four or less than the Bourbon County.
That'd be per KSA 19-2126.
Yep, I have that right there, too.
I'll second.
I move in second.
All right, Milburn?
Yes.
Wisenhunt?
Yes.
You have our word.
Yes. Okay. Dump fees for employees.
So, that's complicated.
Yeah. I've received some, I receive, I imagine we all received some emails recently regarding IRS fringe benefits. I'm not really for sure why this is even a, you know, has become such an urgent topic, but anyway, dump fees, I mean, this benefit has been a benefit older than most of us have been alive, even before it was even a county landfill, when it was a city dump back in the day down in, close to Bell Town. And I mean, I've talked to some people that were around and their dad worked at that, at that very dump. And, I mean, it's always been kind of an unwritten rule, but I mean, today's society, we can't do that, so, but I still think that there's some way that we can work around it.
Yeah, the one way I proposed is not the only way, it's just the easy way, just to end it, you know? So, there's also the tracking of it, you can do that.
Yeah. Well, I think in today's technology, we, from my understanding in talking with the supervisor out there, it's pretty trackable now, so.
Right, it's just going to take extra work in the, the-
Well, the tax, the payroll-
Yeah, yes, because they're going to have to start.
So, I'd say until we can get some numbers on that from payroll, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting on it. I mean, if you guys want to vote, you'll know where I stand, so.
No, I think we need to table it and figure it out. We got, I mean, it's not just the dump fees, there's a lot of, there's more benefits than just the dump fees that we've got to consider, too.
Yes.
We've got to figure out how to, I know there's just a lot to consider, so. Okay. We want to table it for another date?
At least they got us calendars, look.
I know, I see that.
That's so nice.
Well, with my present schedule, I'm looking probably, everything's going to be June 2 for me or later.
That's fine.
Because we got Memorial Day on June, on May 26, so-
Yeah, and I learned my lesson about making things too busy, and we already have a couple of things tabled for the second, so we can do nine.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay. So, we can do this. I move we table the discussion about dump fees for employees until June 9 meeting.
I'll second.
You have our word?
Yes.
Wisenhunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Separation of Public Works and landfill departments.
Okay. I guess it has my name to it. Actually, I believe it should be yours. Original ideal did come from Chairman Wisenhunt a couple of months, a couple of weeks back. It's been something that even before we were commissioners, when we were all kind of working, trying to see how we wanted to see things move forward with the county, has been part of our discussion. I think separation, there's some pluses to that. It lightens the responsibility of the current Public Works Department, funding and funding of the landfill is generate, can be generated through its revenue.
Well, and it already has its own budget.
Yeah.
So, it's not-
Yeah. Yeah.
I have to-
By means.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, you're fine.
The landfill, dump, transfer station, however you want to, whatever you want to call it, has its own budget.
Within the public works.
Within the, well, it's-
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the 2025 budget, it sits there at about $800,000 right now of its own budget.
There's not any reason why it can't stand on its own, be its own budget item, have its own supervision. And then that person reports directly to the commission.
Right.
I have to, so if I, if I may have a moment, I have to ask why, you know, what's the driving factor? What's driving us to make this choice? You know, because to me, I need an expert opinion. I need somebody that's been in it, that's done it, that really knows. I need a risk assessment, a benefit analysis. I need all of these things to, and the cost, oh my gosh, the cost. You know, we can separate these things and we can say that it's not going to cost anywhere, we can say that there's not going to be any, any addition, but you know, there is a, there is some sharing that happens there of, of, you know, mechanic of secretary of-
I'll give you kind of the same analysis that was given to me when I talked about rock quarries and asphalting, whether that should be a, you know, county function or should we contract that out? And it was, we should have cost analysis, and I agree 100%. And when we start talking about that cost analysis, then we start talking about the cost of a cost analysis. And then we come right back to the same thing, do we have the money to do it? So, then we end up in this, in this mud, you know, just spinning our tires. And right now, what I know, how I feel and the way I've seen things, and I ran on this as part of my campaign, I look at this as part of an overall restructuring that, that I have been vocal about, and I, right now, 2025 is a perfect, perfect way to go, because
this? I mean, what was making you want to change? What's the pros of doing this?
The way I, the way I have it here is that, I mean, my whole function behind restructuring in 2026, we're going to go to five commissioners. So, if this experiment does not work with the 2025 budget as it stands, then when we is that we've been doing the same things, the same way for, I mean, you just plug in sit here with five people, we can reverse this.
I'm not willing to experiment with taxpayer money.
the numbers.
I'm not willing to do that.
You know, was it the last four years? Well, we're not costing any taxpayer money. Was it the last eight years? Was it the last 20 years that we've been functioning the county under the same, the
But I, I think that, I think that everything costs more money.
same concept, the same crews that, in makeup?
And so, I do believe that doing this has the true potential to do that.
We've got nine supervisors at Public Works.
I mean, here, here are a few numbers if you guys want to review them.
We got such a wide disparity of pay, of pay scale that there isn't nothing, you know, that is set. And I think you got all the bees of the Public Works as it is now, and then you, you add in-
I am fine.
And you add in, you know, because one of the other things I'm looking at down the road is, is, is Maintenance Department, because the Maintenance Department covers the whole county, chairs, cars, police car, you know, ambulances, all the vehicles, and I think that that needs to be its own department as well. But I think the advantage of it is, is that it's, that they're smaller, more workable departments, and I think that, again, it comes down to, you know, we've been, the same old complaints that I got when I went out and talked to people, and when you walk and drive around and you look, there, there are some good roads and there's some bad roads, but we seem to repeat the same processes over and over again. And, you know, maybe it's time that we do something just a little bit different.
Can I ask, I know you want to change the change, but is there a reasoning or change besides just the fact that it's different?
I think that overall, it will, it will be more economic as a candidate.
How, how do you think it will be economic, based on what factors?
Well, because I, I think there's a lot of areas that we spend money now that we would be able to streamline a lot better. I mean, especially when we start working at, well, I would have to ask, but I would say, where did our last three vehicles come from? And most likely, it's going to be purple one, or some deal like that. Do we have, you know, have we talked about leasing vehicles versus not leasing vehicles? And, I mean, I know that in landfill, and just the walkthroughs and stuff that I went through, there seems to be a lack of priority when it comes to certain items out there, and, and, and the excuse I get is that, well, we're limited on our budget, but, so we have to spend our money where we got, where we need it. But that doesn't solve the problem that have, that happens out there. We got one piece of equipment out there that has to get jump-started every day, because somewhere in our budget, we don't have the money to pay for whatever it takes to fix that, that, that piece of equipment. And I think with a supervisor and its own department, that, it becomes more of a priority to be, for that person than it does for somebody that's looking at, at three, three or four different departments.
I would just say for a superintendent of the city-
They'll have to have a plan.
More hiring people at supervisors, never the way to go.
If, and I, I looked at that, too.
You just said there's nine supervisors, over how many employees?
Over 44.
Forty-four, so one supervisor manages five people.
So, if you start streamlining and you put somebody that's in charge of one department, you know, I, I think we go from, in the restructuring that I got laid out, if we go from, we'll go from nine supervisors down to-
That's what I currently do now.
Five.
But you just, but you just said you want to add.
No, no, they're already supervisors, they're already supervisors.
But if, but if, but if you-
No, I said that there's a lack of priority in the supervision of things, but there's already a landfill supervisor, there's already a maintenance supervisor, or there, or, I don't know, because it's hard to, it's hard to track down some of that, but there's, and then you also have a, a Public Works, you know, because you're going to, you're going to, you're going to end up lowering one and making it even across the board on, on your three big departments, and then, I mean, it'll end up being cheaper in the long run, in my opinion, that's just my-
Do you still have any numbers back in there?
No. I mean, right now, I'm still working in numbers. I, I was hoping that it would have been-
You're still working the numbers which will make the changes before you come up with the numbers?
Well, this one, I, the reason why it's unique is because it has its own budget. It's already, it's already budgeted.
You've already worked those numbers in?
Well, it's already, 2025 is already factored in.
How much do you see saving by doing this?
Right now, whatever we have in 2025 is 800,000, so-
Does it have to drop by what?
I don't know. I don't know.
You don't know the numbers, Dave?
Not, well, that's what I said, I have not got all the numbers worked in on the whole thing, because the, you know, and if you want to be, of course, this really isn't the time, but if you want to be totally frank about it, and the people that I was trying to work with to develop a overall plan, that they're not really, you know, nobody wants to, nobody wants to work out a possibility of change to get, it's all about protecting what they got.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What exactly is the definition of a landfill to, like, the residents? Is it, is it like for profit? Is it, I mean, just-
It can't be for profit, government cannot make a profit.
Okay, but normally when something, a situation like this is going to be changed, it's going to come, you know, there's going to be a downfall of rates and, you know, if you're going to adjust-
Well, that's the thing, if we-
Hourly wages and-
It can't on paper make a profit, but it can sustain itself, right?
Okay, but I imagine-
So, possibly, as it starts making money over the years, we can lower what the taxpayers are putting into it.
Or spend, or get new equipment, spend more.
Well, I would hope we wouldn't do all of that all at once. I mean, you constantly-
Right now, your rate, rates are high compared to surrounding counties doing trash.
No, we're not.
Yeah, locally or- County.
How come you guys don't go to Arcadia?
Allen County is 24.
We did.
Well, that's a corporation, that is not a municipality.
Ask that question, Dave. Go ahead.
What?
Go ahead, no, you, you go ahead and answer.
Okay, well, what about Allen County? What's their rate?
24.50 a time.
What's Lynn County?
I don't know. I mean, we take ours, we take ours, because we're not a landfill, they are a landfill. We take ours to Lynn County, we take ours to Allen County, because we have to charge, it's a transfer station on a landfill. There's a big difference.
Okay, why are we comparing a, a transfer station to a landfill?
You did, I didn't.
No, you're the one that said, Arcadia, Arcadia is a landfill.
Well, because you guys say that it's, it's not, that there's, it's cheaper all the way around us, and that, but, I mean, I see in, I see trash services that come out of Crawford County or coming up here to that area.
So, then what a good question, Dave.
Then why don't you tax them? Why is it us, the local businesses?
Who's being taxed?
I'm just saying is, if you're, if this is all about the end game of raising rates, like you just said, because it's hot, it's a lot higher in Arcadia, then why are we, the local residents, you know, the locally owned businesses?
I don't think, the chairman said anything about raising rates. I said he said, I thought he said that we would be lowering it overall in the cost in the end.
I think there's a lot of things before we get too heated that we can think about. And I, and I think one of the things that you guys need to consider is something that Clayton just brought up, and you said, why do we have people from Pittsburgh coming here? Why do we have people from Missouri coming here? You have people from Missouri coming to here and dumping their bees. You have several roll-off companies coming from Missouri to drop the roll-off, because there's not a landfill in Nevada, correct? So, there's one in Lamar, but they choose to come here. There's several trash companies now that are coming from Pittsburgh to dump here. And we came here, we came back here, I will tell you that, because we were going to dump in Seattle. We were going to GFL, because their gate rate, what you see, and you guys are all pie in the sky, looking at $85 and all this stuff, that's a gate rate for somebody bringing a bag of trash in there, but they're cutting deals, the contractors. Somebody that goes in there, they said, hey, what's the guy's name? I'll call him. He ran, he was the big dude down there. Matt. Matt, you know, he'll cold call you, hey, you bring all your tubs down here and we got you, $25 a time, $25 a time, all day and night. That's they did. But we chose to stay in Fort Scott, because it helps Fort Scott, and that's what we've done. I think what we don't want to see, as far as hollers, is everybody get excited and start charging more money, because ultimately, it don't cost me, it don't cost Clayton more money, it costs the citizens of the community. And that's what it goes back to. If they're, if they're charging $30, I don't even know what a trash guy charges, but they're charging $30 and the rates double for some damn reason, they're going to pass that off to the customer.
First of all, I never, nobody here ever said anything about raising rates.
Well, I'm just assuming.
But-
Yeah, so, so I'm just going to go ahead and finish real quick, Van, just real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
So, what I'm saying is, there's ways to compensate for that. If we're worried about running, we're worried about budget, we're worried about equipment, we're worried about jump starter battery, things like that, then there's ways to compensate when there's people coming from Crawford County and they're coming from Missouri, there's cost adjustments.
I'm not saying that it can't be spent.
Don't be finished, Dave, if you don't mind. There's ways to fit, there's ways to fit that in there, just like when I pull up to Iowa. If I pull up to Iowa, and whatever you call it, what's that county? Allen County. I think I've heard of that. But if I pull up to Allen County, they say, where are you bringing this from? Because maybe, number one, they may not let me dump there if they come to the county, and number two, if it comes to the county, I get a different rate than what if I bring it from my county, because they're going to, they're going to double up on me. If I'm bringing it from Bourbon County and dumping over there, they're going to charge me more than if I'm bringing it from their county. So, I think that's something that if you guys want to look into, that's something you quite possibly could handle a raise, but not the local citizens, if you're taking care of the local people. So, that's my two cents on that. And you can, we can all say, say what I'm talking about money, but eventually, we're going to talk about money.
I think eventually, we always talk about money. I mean, I think it all comes down to-
Right. So, what I would like to see is three years of P and L. Have you guys got your P and L statements on that landfill?
I did have.
Do you know what a P and L is?
I don't have them, no.
Okay, so I think that's a great place to start. Let's get to profits and losses and see what we've done, where we're at. That's what any business, any sharp businessman would say.
But I, I, I think the question here is, is we're not, we're not changing anything from this, from the, from the operational standpoint, other than the supervision of it. Instead of it being part of, of an overall department that, that has a lot on his plate now, we're, we're giving the supervisor that is sitting out there the authority to, to run the day-to-day operation of it and, and put the priority of, of the landfill ahead of the priority of other pieces of equipment that, that for whatever reason, Public Works doesn't have the, either the budget money or the scheduling to do it, but they would have, they would have their own, you know?
But you just said, you said you don't know the numbers for the last 10 years, so how do you know if the budget or income has increased or decreased? You said you don't know that. What if it's losing money? What if, what if the current thing's making money each year, what if it's raising it? Now you're going to change it, because you don't even know the numbers for the last-
What do we, again, the only thing we're changing is supervision.
But why would you change your vision if it keeps increasing each year?
I'm, I'm, I'm lost in-
If your income is increasing each year, why would you change it?
You think it's under that supervision, or is it just under the, the same thing as a sales tax? It just happens to be the number of people coming in and out?
What I'm saying, you don't know the numbers. You shouldn't change anything until you know the numbers. You shouldn't, you're basing off change to change, what you said.
I'm basing off, I'm basing it off of the, the supervision that is occurring out there, not the profit and loss. I'm, I'm, I'm doing it on, on the leadership capabilities that's happening at the landfill.
And that's what you're basing off of. How long's the supervisor been there, the current supervisor?
Uh, two months.
I think we've got to be careful here. I think we need to be pretty careful here about personnel.
Instead of it being part of, of an overall department that, that, um, has a lot on his plate now, we're, we're given the supervisor that is sitting out there, the authority to, to run the day-to-day operation of it, and, and put the priority of, of the landfill ahead of the priority of other pieces of equipment that, that for whatever reason, Public Works doesn't have the, either the budget money or the scheduling to do it, but they would have, they would have their own.
But you just says, you said you don't know the numbers for the last ten years, so how do you know if the budget or income has increased or decreased? You said you don't know that.
What if it's losing money?
What if, what if the current thing's making money each year, what if it's raising it, now you're going to change it? Because you don't even know the numbers.
What do we, I mean, again, the only thing we're changing is supervision.
But why would you change your vision if it keeps increasing each year?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm lost
If your income is increasing each year, why would you change?
You think it's under that supervision, or is it just under the, the same thing as a sales tax? It just happens to be the number of people coming in and out?
You shouldn't change anything until you know the numbers, you should, you're basing off change to change, would you say?
I'm basing off, I'm basing it off of the, the supervision that is occurring out there, not the profit and loss. I'm, 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 I'm doing it on, on the leadership capabilities that's happening at the landfill.
And that's what you're basing off of.
Right.
How long's the supervisor been there, the current supervisor?
Uh, two months.
I think we gotta be careful here, I think we need to be pretty careful here about personnel.
But you want to talk to the previous one?
I don't have, listen, I don't have, you guys want to have that conversation?
I think this is
I'm not talking, I'm not even here talking about the supervision, what I'm talking about is, yeah, they need some iron. I mean, you've got some pieces of crap out there, but they need game pieces of crap because of, you know, the, the environment they work in, right? So, whether you take that, I don't give a shit where you take that money from to get them good equipment, they need good equipment, because that's the only business you have that actually turns profit. You ain't making money on gravel roads, but people are paying for it. But, but that, that, that place out there needs good equipment, so I don't care.
So you just answered my question.
So, I answered your question?
Mm-hmm.
What was your question?
Or my point, you just made my point for me.
I made your point?
Yeah.
Because it's about supervision and the last supervisor didn't buy the equipment?
I'm just saying is that we're, we're, they're operating out there, you just said it, they're operating with pieces of equipment, uh, pieces of crap out there. And the, the current operational status is that equipment's been out there how many years? You know, how long have you been hauling trash and seen the same compactor? Or seen the same loader in
A year.
A year?
No, I'm dead serious, we, we
You've only been hauling trash for a year?
No, I've been hauling trash just that year.
Our compactor's been there for a year.
It's funny you've been there, hasn't it? Was it last year?
The loader inside's been there a year?
No, the compactor.
Yeah.
The loader inside's been there a long time.
What, a compactor?
No, the loader inside.
The back, a rebuild motor in there not even a year ago.
Yeah. They had to put a new motor in it when they could have probably afforded to buy a different one. That would have been better than the one that they're sitting in there with it now.
It was running just fine today, so.
It, it's just, it back to, it just comes back to the money amount of it for me. Like, I know that, it sounds, what you're saying to me is that they want some, people want some new machinery and people want some, some better things to work with, but we have to wait on the money. Um, you know, the, the sheriff wants new cars, we have to wait on the money, you know, it's, to me, it is about the money, and people, once they do more of a job, they may say, I'll do this job for this number, but eventually, it's about the money, people want more money, everything is more money. And I think we need to do a cost analysis on everything and just do a work session.
Cost analysis?
Well, we can ask the people that, that work there, they're, about their budget and what they're putting into it and what they foresee, they, they do projections. Um, Susan's been helping a lot with projections and, and with the budget, and, and Greg, uh, he maybe could look into helping us, I'm just, I don't have the answers there, I'm just saying there's, there's, there's things that we can, um, we don't have to jump to, we can have a work session. I just got here, and I know that I don't know as much as you know, but
I don't know how you guys do your books, but I just know on, like my business, it's a matter of going to the computer and figuring out, you know, you can go to Bourbon County and see how much you spend on your trash, you can go
Okay, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that we're talking apples and oranges here, because you're talking about the cost of, of, of running the business, but in your business, if you got a foreman and he's, you know, running your crews and stuff, and he's not doing the job that you pay, that you're paying him to do, and, and that there, you're going to keep that foreman?
I'm probably not a good person to ask that, Dave. We jumpstart every damn thing I got.
I'm just saying is that, I'm just saying is that, that if he's overworked, you're going to get him out.
Business man of the year. Ah, ah, the ship fired.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, can I talk about some budget reports?
Yes, Jennifer.
Okay, so I know Susan sent out to each of the commissioners budget reports, so revenue and expense reports, um, fund trial balances. So those show you everything, all the money that's came in, all the money that's gone out. So, here's the revenue and expense report for twenty twenty-five. It shows you a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred, seventy-five dollars and forty-three cents has came in in revenue in the landfill. Expenditures, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. So your revenue less expenses is fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. So you spent more than you've brought in.
And how many, uh, was that all spent at the landfill, or was that all spent throughout, uh, Public Works?
No, the, the landfill is its own fund, like
Right.
The money that goes into the landfill stays in the landfill, it doesn't go to other Public Works departments. It goes directly into the landfill, um, it is not a levied fund. So, this is fees only, it is a fees-only department.
I'll, I'll disagree some, because one of the questions I asked on one of those, on, on the accounts payable before was about a, a, an expenditure to landfill
Okay.
That, uh, because, uh, maybe that equip, piece of, of tool might be used on one of landfill's pieces of equipment, but it also is used on everybody else, Public Works pulled it out of the landfill fund. So they do pull money out of the landfill fund.
They may, they may pay for expenses out of there, but the money that actually comes from landfill, but, okay, so if they purchase, say, a welder, if they purchase a welder, um, they may pay for it. And when I was in Public Works, we did this quite often, big purchases that are used there, because they will, they'll take the welder over, they'll weld the gate, they'll weld whatever has been broken. Twenty-five percent out of road and bridge, twenty-five percent out of sales tax, and so, it goes down, just like that, fifteen percent out of landfill. So it may be spent out of landfill, but if the money isn't actually going to other departments, it, the revenue stays in this account. So, if an expense is being used at the landfill, I mean, that's why they're charging it to the landfill.
Okay.
But that's, that's the thing, this is just the twenty twenty-five, I know she sent you twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, I'm not sure how many years, um, was sent.
So that's twenty twenty-five so far?
That's twenty twenty-five so far, yes.
But that's, is that taking into account that we made the building payment for the transfer station?
Absolutely.
And so it always looks negative the first part of the year, because we make that big payment.
The thirty-three thousand.
What?
Well, she should start coming back once you start
Yes, it should start coming back. And as far as, and as far as, as far as raising rates, since you brought it up, we'll talk about it.
Sure.
Why couldn't you call a man running the landfill and say, hey, I'm a local business, and as long as I'm bringing all my stuff from Bourbon County, you leave my rates alone, right?
Call, call, I can call the local guy from
I think that, that's our job, I don't think, I don't think that they should be
You mean not call the Bourbon County landfill supervisor and ask him for a rate?
No, I don't think that's to their discretion, I don't think they can
But if we were to raise rates for, say, the out-of-county people
I mean, if you were to tax the out-of-county, then I think that's a different situation, but I don't know what you're thinking, why are you talking about the local guys?
Yeah, why would I, I mean, I'm all about local business, so if it helps you guys have a competitive edge, because you're a local business.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why I brought it up, I mean, if, if you guys were to, for business, WCA, GFL, I'd call that hustling, say, hey, I'm going to try to pay a thousand dollars, can you give me a better rate? But I would feel comfortable calling the Bourbon County landfill, kind of hustle the county. Um, but I think if you had set, a set, a standard set that says, hey, if you're from outstate, you pay this much, if you're from out county, you pay this much, if you're from inside the boundaries, you pay this, because honestly, we're all, including you guys, we're all funding the county, we're all funding the landfill. So we ought to get a better rate, you know, and that's the way other landfills treat their residents.
Well, that's the way, that's the way that other counties around us treat their landfills. If there a county ran landfill, residents get a better rate.
Right, right.
Oh, um, we have two different rates right now anyway.
We do that.
I was never planning on raising rates, I don't know what we're even
Well, maybe I just dreamt it, I don't know.
I don't know, who told you that we were going to raise rates?
Well, I'll reveal my sources.
All right then.
Some on the east side, you know that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I got, I'm, I'm
Wall Street mafia, right?
Because I, I always, here's my thing, I said, if we're going to set up here, and let's say, let's pretend we ever did talk about raising rates, it would be hard for me to stomach commissioners and employees that are dumping for free to tell me that I need to pay more to help offset costs so we can have nicer things. Don't make me wait in line behind you and you're not paying, and I'm paying double, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's the point I wanted, because
I don't say, until, until January this year, I wasn't an employee, and I've always paid, I, 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 I stood behind lines for people that were driving in for other employees and, and, and getting
We've had issues with that in the past, we've had
Right, so I mean, you know, uh, you know, sue me for hanging on to tradition. You know, my dad worked in there, worked, worked there in the seventies, Jake Westcoat was one of the landfill operators way back when. You know, uh, Frank Miller was one of the first, uh, at the city dump. And I was talking to one of hi, one of his grandsons the other day, and he said, man, we've always had this tradition. And so, you know, just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to hang on to just a little bit of it, but I don't care. I mean, I, I make a piddly little bit of money being a county commissioner and walked away from my job to do it, but I can still come up with, uh, ten, fifteen dollars to pay my, 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 my fee out there at the dump, it isn't that big of a deal. Uh, it was more about, you know, the guys that aren't making, you know, that are working out there at, at, I'll just, you know, at the land, or at Public Works that aren't making, you know
Sure, we did some stuff like that in city, we gave free
They're not making very much, you know
Free shelter house.
They make about close to poverty level, right?
Yeah, well, I don't know about poverty level, I, I've seen some poverty, I don't know if that's poverty, but
But, but I mean, as overall raising rates, i- i- that, that, was that in my for, you know, in my forecast? No. I mean, I actually want to lower taxes, so, you know, uh, and, and I'm a party of one on that, you know, because I think services, that if we don't start looking at our services and, 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 uh, how we do things, then we're going to continue to be down this same deal of either having to raise the mill or, or finding some outside revenue sources that lowers the cost itself. But, um, when we, when we do the same things over and over and over again every year, and we encounter the same problems that we have every year, we either got to bump this over, or we got to bump that over, then, then I, then I'm, I'm looking at it from another angle.
You also did not move them, but my only thing is, you have not ran the numbers, I've had the supervisor, what comes with the supervisor? Increase in pay, right?
Well, we already got that supervisor out there.
So, okay, so the pay statement's saying, either they're separated.
No. I, I would imagine that in the begin, you know, in the future, that's probably going to go, just like anything else.
That's what I'm saying, you should have said something like, they, they fixed on a few that didn't buy new. All I'm asking is, run the numbers before we make a decision. Don't just change it just to change, I know that's what you're in on, I appreciate that, but run the numbers when you're talking about something that makes money and generates good money for the taxpayer.
I don't, I'm not saying about, uh, you know, uh, again, I, it, it, it's, it's, to me, it's about supervision, not about, not about rates, raising rates, it's about the supervision, it's about the leadership.
That's not a good enough reason to separate it.
For me, it's because I come from the trash business.
In, in, in any environment I've ever been in
I know how much money the trash business can make if it becomes a priority as opposed to a second thought.
I don't believe that we can have that conversation right now, I really don't.
Even without raising rates, especially on the local
I think we're beating a dead, we're beating a dead horse here, so I move that we table this until we have the numbers, um, that, um, that can support either one of ours, uh, claims, so
Do you mind, David, if we table it, um, even a little bit further that way? And you could always move the tabling up, um, but that way we can maybe get a work session in there?
Yep.
So, can we do June twenty-third?
Well, make a, like, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we separate them.
I, I really
My motion's still on the table.
I second your motion, David. It's the twenty-third. Would you add a date to it?
The twenty-third of what?
June.
Uh, sixteenth.
Uh, sixteenth, uh, June, okay. All right, Milburn?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Poison Hunt?
Hey, can I make one more statement?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
I was just going to say, I don't come to meetings very often, you guys have probably never seen me in here, and I like coming to them. But if you guys have this discussion, maybe you entertain talking to some of the local business people that come in there every day at a hundred mile an hour, like Clayton did.
If we're going to do rate changes, I definitely would have a work session with, with the people that come in there. But this wasn't about, this wasn't about that, but
But I was saying, you need, I think you need to consider changes like to out-of-town people. That just make
Do you even know the differences here between local and out-of-county, out-of-state?
Uh, yeah, I do think I know the difference, Clayton.
I'm just asking, how much difference is this?
Right now, do we charge different?
Oh, let me, hold on, I, I just gave you some numbers, yes.
If you bring these numbers and you know if you, you think it's good for change, then you should know them.
I got some numbers.
Okay, again, I think we have a difference in opinion on what we're talking about here.
Maybe I squirrel this off.
Yeah, maybe so, because I mean, we, we, I'm not talking about rates or any of that, I'm talking about, you know, and, and I can't keep talking about it because it's, it, it's a personnel issue, so, you know, um
And to, to clear up, before any personnel issues or anything like that, I've been talking about separating this thing for months. Because I come, I work for the biggest trash company in the world.
That's not a good sign for me as a local business.
No, and I'm not, no, I'm not
They're all about putting local guys out, so
No, no, I'm not Well, if, if they come and offer, just take a crap load of money from them, that's all I can say.
I don't report Scott, but I don't worry about big, big city.
Uh, and, and I just see how trash can make money. And if we separate it and run it like its own entity, how it can sustain itself and pay for its own stuff, even without raising rates on locals. But it has to be, it has to go from being a second thought, because, and it's not about personnel, it's not about that at all, but if you, if it's ran correctly because somebody cares about it, then it, then it's a, it's an entity that we don't even have to worry about, because it's out there doing its thing.
And maybe that's what's confusing, because I didn't know we were talking about employee problems.
That was some numbers, some numbers, that was some numbers, there's some numbers on there.
That's the numbers? I wouldn't have voted for that, so That's about raising rates, is everything that we were talking about, just for transparency. I would not have voted for it.
Okay, so I didn't agree.
I, I guess you didn't, I mean, but it's news to me, because I've not seen those, seen those numbers or, or, or that information. So if that's why you guys were here, is because of what you might have heard from somebody else, then, then you're, you know, thank you for coming, because I would not have voted for it.
Well, thank you for that, I'm not voting for it, pretend last week.
Huh?
I said thank you for not voting for something I brought up with.
I'll be real honest, I don't know what I dismissed. I'm honestly
She handed me a piece of paper with some, uh, raise, with rate
Proposals, it was proposals.
Well, proposal for some rate changes.
Where'd that come from?
Um, I, it does not have a name to it, so I'm not, I'm not going to
Thin air?
Again, it's personnel that we can't discuss, so
Also, it's a Bourbon County employee.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no idea. But, uh, I will not, I mean, I'm not going to raise rates without having, you know, again, information and, and facts on that, what I'm talking about tonight was all about leadership. And so, you know, it's, and, 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 and different people can have their, their different opinions on, on what, but, um, I mean, I've, I've tried to work behind the scenes, I've tried to work in, in other areas, and when thing, when my trust gets broken in something, it's, you know, I'm sorry, you know, but, uh, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to have my trust broken and then, uh, and then we just continue working down the same path, so. I do what I can do, but I agree, uh, I was not prepared with numbers to support what, what I wanted to do, so, uh, I'll see you guys on, if you want to come back and, and, uh, defend us again, um, June sixty?
Thank you.
Okay, public comments for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
I do not have any.
What's that, public comments? None. No, no public comments today? Large amount of space for public comments.
Did you have to sign up for public comments?
You should. Do you got something you want to share?
Well, I was just, I, being an old ag teacher, we use the Robert's Rules of Order, the par law and everything, and I'm not pointing fingers or anything, I'm just saying, you guys either need to use preliminary procedure or don't use it. And, you know, just, for example, like when there's a discussion, you could, you could say you've got three minutes, you know, I mean, just things like that, but you guys either need to, either need to use or don't use it, but kind of try to stick to that of Robert's Rules if you can.
I agree. Anybody else want to add to? New business for you, sir? Sorry, did I take your?
We're going to make a phone call to Ellyn Taylor for animal control. She requested to call in, and I, so. Hey, is it E- Ellyn?
Ellyn.
Ellyn?
Ellyn Taylor, yes.
All right, Ellyn Taylor, you have the floor. This is the Bourbon County Commission.
Hi, I am coming on behalf of the animals that are being dumped out in the county. I, for the last three years, have been picking up animals dumped out in the county, bedding them and helping them find homes. Since the city walls have changed as far as the animal control goes, there has been an excessive amount of dumping compared to the last two years. I am at a point where I am at max capacity. I need a facility or land or something to keep helping these animals. I know by listening to the commissioner meeting, financially money is tight, but I'm asking the commissioners, the county commissioners, if there is any land out there available that we can start housing the animals that are being dumped. I am not a rescue. I have been working with animal control here. Officer Eastwood, I spoke to Sheriff Officer Doreson when working out in the county. I do anything that I possibly can for the community as far as the animals go, but I'm at the point where I need some help on getting them some sort of temporary housing. The shelter here is a kill shelter. I have been working with Phil as much as possible to keep the animals from dying. I can't help at this point. I am really frustrated, and I, I need some assistance from the county as possible.
Okay, Ellyn, I seen you were on the agenda, so I, you know, I started trying to look and see, you know, what it is a person could do, if they could do anything, and, and right now, you know, we don't have a facility, and if you watch the rest of the earlier part of our meeting there, we also don't have a lot of funds, so.
Do you guys have any land that you guys would let? I don't want the land to be donated or given. I, I just want to utilize it, because I have a plan for a self-sustaining sanctuary. I have been looking for acreage, but it's been really hard to find acreage in small amounts around here.
Yeah.
So if you guys have any options, please.
Mrs. Taylor, this is Commissioner Beer Bauer. I've talked with Ann Dare in regards to you in the past, and I really thank you for what you've done so far. And we do have some county land. I just have not been able to look at the list of county land that we have and to see if there's a possibility that there would be one that would fit into that plan that you're talking about. I also looked online, and there are several, Perina and other pet food companies that offer out different grants, and I would, I would really like to, you know, pursue some of them as well.
It takes money to apply for grants, because you have to be a 501(c)(3) in order to get a grant awarded to you. It costs $300 for me to apply for a possible donation.
Right. I'm looking at the county, looking at the county, maybe looking into some grants to help us, maybe matching grants or something like that when we start our 2026 budget. So I think the first step in this process is looking at the list of land that Bourbon County owns and see if there's something that would work for this type of facility, and then we could start, you know, just chipping away at it from there.
I mean, in theory, it would be a self-sustaining animal sanctuary, but it could also potentially bring in money to the community by what I'm trying to establish.
I, I like your ideal. I just, you know, I think, I think we got to start off with some steps here, and I think first is, is look at this list of county-owned property and see if there is something that we could help with in that situation.
Okay.
I was going to look at the GIS today, Ellyn, but I, I didn't, I wasn't able to make time for that. I do believe we also need to consult Bob, our attorney, or our counselor, because I don't know if you could just go putting, if you didn't take over the property, I don't know if the county could own the piece of property, or I don't know what the liability would be for that with animals. So that's a concern of mine that we would have to follow up on.
I think it would end up having to be a donate.
Yeah, and I don't know if, what, you know, if we could donate to a private individual that, you know, that may.
If I get offered some land, I will come up with $300 and get that 501(c)(3), because then it becomes beneficial for me to do so. But at this point, me spending $300 on a possible is not realistic in my head when I can be using that for spay and neuter.
Yeah.
So, if there's an option, though, let me know, and I will absolutely go after my 501, and it wouldn't take long. I already have the application and everything.
Okay. I, like I said, I'm going to be out of commission for a couple of weeks, but after that, I would be more than happy to take a look at the existing land that Bourbon County owns and then see what we can do to, I mean, maybe we can find a piece of property, and then in the meantime, we can talk to our county counselor, and then hopefully there might be some other people out there that catch wind of this and can offer, you know, offer some assistance, and maybe we can find some other grants and money out there somewhere. So I think, I think it's a, it's a good, a good thing to be looking for. I know there's at least one person in this audience that posted a picture of a mama dog and litters on Facebook because it got dropped off near their property, so I know we all care, so.
I appreciate it. I just, I need a little boost up in the right direction from the community somehow.
Okay.
So.
I appreciate.
That's all I have. I appreciate the consideration and your time. I guess we will be in touch.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Who we got?
We missed your comments.
No, no, we had some.
Hold on, that's right. Zoning discussion.
No, yeah, zoning discussion first.
Okay. Do you want me to do it, or?
Oh, you can, or I, I mean, I got the dates here. I'm going to be out of, tomorrow is, they're having a regular meeting, because they got public forums coming up, and I will not be available tomorrow, so I would need somebody to sit in on that meeting with them as they did last week when I wasn't able to make it. And then their public forums are May 14th at 6:00 PM in Union Town, which would be.
Wednesday.
Your current district, yeah.
Brandon, you're going to that?
May 20th, 6:00 PM in Fulton.
I'll go to that.
And then I should be available to do the 5/21, 6:00 PM at Memorial Hall.
Okay.
So I tried to plan each one of these, so it would be in each one of our districts, and we wouldn't have to, you know, do, do a meeting to do it, so.
Okay. How, what about the Tuesday, the 5/13 one, then?
Tomorrow.
That's the regular meeting.
Yeah.
So it's here.
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to be in hospital, right?
Yeah. I would rather be here.
Yeah.
And is it what time tomorrow?
Uh, my surgery?
5:30. No.
No, the meeting. 5:30.
5:30, mm-hmm.
Didn't you make that one?
I mean, I can, if you can't.
It's probably one of their last meetings. I mean, they're, they're not, I mean, I think we went, in the original deal was to go up to 5/19, but I think we're going to have to extend past that, especially with the public forums. So I would imagine that we're going to have to vote to extend that, because they were supposed to bring their recommendations on 5/19. So, and then with Memorial Day, so I'm looking at, you know, maybe we should extend that to at least June the 9th. So I'll.
Do they have one more meeting scheduled after the 21st public hearing?
Yeah, I was, I don't know if they're continuing with their Wednesday meetings or not on that. I didn't see any other dates than tomorrow, so.
Those four are all they talked about when I was there.
Yeah. So I would, maybe one of you guys, whoever's with them tomorrow, ask the chairman to discuss with their board if they're going to do another meeting after the 21st, or if they're going to bring their recommendations, because if they are, then the 21st, then the 26th is Memorial Day, so we're looking at.
I think they probably have to have another one afterwards, because if they're getting, if they're getting a input from the community, then they're going to want to meet and put that input to work.
I would say that we, we, we gave them the 5/19, so we're definitely going past that. So I move that we, that we extend there and that they bring their recommendations to us on June the 9th.
I.
That's Monday, June the 9th. That's my motion, so.
Okay.
I move.
So you go to where, the June 9th?
Yeah. I mean, that should give them enough time to, after the 21st, to have another meeting or two meetings and work out their details, and then present to us on the 9th.
Okay. All right, and so they'll have another meeting, and they'll, they'll decide when their other meeting is, though, right?
Right.
And you're going to be done with your surgery to be back?
I'll, I can make the 21st date, which is their public forum here, and then I'll be right back.
Okay, okay. So you'll be at the next one. They do after the 21st also.
Whatever meetings they just, they decide.
Brandon, did you say that you?
I can't do it tomorrow.
Can't tomorrow, all right.
We got to go to Kansas City tomorrow, but I will be at the one on Wednesday.
All right. So, since I'll be there, it, there wasn't, you know, I wasn't here when it was formed or anything, and I wasn't here in the beginning meetings of the committee, and, and, you know, they got somebody with a tripod with a camera anyway. Is it okay if they use this thing and turn it on here, or?
Okay, so, since this is going to be, which is a major topic on, it's a major topic on Facebook, and there's a difference between transparency and the democratic process.
Oh, just eat.
Yeah, we might as well address it, because the reason why the guy came with the camera is because we weren't putting it on YouTube.
Okay.
The very first week that we, that we had this, we had technical difficulties with some of the equipment, and so we didn't put it on, but then I was shown how to operate the YouTube.
Okay.
And when the next week come around, it was put to a vote by that board, and that board decided, that's the democratic process right there. They, they formed, you know, they, they held a vote on it, and they decided that as a group, they did not want to be on YouTube.
Okay.
So, open meeting to the public, which meets the coma, you know, the coma standards for this, and anybody can come in, they can be filmed, they can do whatever, and then if this board wants to change that direction and they want to be on YouTube, that's up to them. I'm not, I'm, I wanted this to be from the get-go, because there's such a big cry that I'm trying to influence or, you know, ramrod this thing on this topic, that I left it up to them. And the only thing that our role in any of these meetings with them is, is as an advisor, as a, for advice from, from the, you know, the council as far as, you know, how far they want to go. Trying to keep them on, on course, so that there isn't going way off onto something else. I mean, their, their whole thing is supposed to be about zoning, and whatever they come up with recommendations for, against, or down the fence, I, you know, but the whole thing about, about the being on YouTube and stuff, that was, that was the democratic process at work.
Okay, okay.
So.
So I will not ask the IT guy to?
You, I would ask the board if they change their mind.
Well, it'll be too late at that point. I have to do it now. It'll be too late if I come and then ask the board, then the IT man will be gone.
Well, they can show you how to operate.
He said he couldn't.
It's one button.
Well, that's only if they set it up. I asked extra questions. So, the one button's only if they set it up. He said that I don't, I am not allowed, because I might mess it up, is what he told me, so.
Hmm. I find that weird.
He might be right. I really might mess it up, so.
I find that weird.
You can always set it up, and if you want to record.
That's going to bring us around to that question, too. So, anyway.
One question?
No.
No.
Another deal. But, I mean, that's where we're at as far as it goes with, with why or why not they are on YouTube, so.
All right. Next due business, Freeman?
Yes, okay, so as we had a previous discussion, and I'll pass these items back out again. Freeman, and it's been in the newspaper, that they have extended their timeline from June to September, if you want a copy of that. And, and it is for reasons of construction, trying to get things ADA standard, because the standards change from the, from the original building construction to now, so they have a lot of work that has to bring things up to construction. And the big one that they ran into is with fire, the fire monitoring equipment and stuff like that, and the company that they have to deal with is backlog, so that's what pushed it to the September deadline, you know, extension. So, that's what I read to you guys before in the executive session, and so all they're asking for, and this is the agreement, is that we extend it to September 1, 2025. It's the same purchase, or same emergency department funding agreement that we originally signed. It's just because they can do an extension, and they've asked for that extension. And I think our consensus in the executive session was, was to approve it, so I'm just asking tonight for the, for the chairman to sign. They also are doing a similar thing with the city, because it was both city and county that was part of this agreement process.
Thank you, David.
I think the clerk has a copy that you need.
I'll make a motion that the chairman sign the extension.
I'll second.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Uh, yes.
Poison Hunt?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, sign the extension.
I'll second.
David Bauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Uh, yes.
Why isn't that?
Yes.
I take it, okay, well, I'll let you move forward to the next item.
Next item, county cameras.
County cameras. All right, so I take it, because, um, I don't think that our I T. Guy, I, our I T. Guy is here.
No.
No, but our Public Works Director is, if he would, uh, is Eric still back there? Shoot. Earlier today, we had a, or I had a discussion on, about cameras. And, um, uh, newly ones being placed at, um, the landfill and the cameras that you have at Public Works and, and then, of course, cameras throughout, I mean, that, that's not yours, that, it's just our camera system. But since I have you here, um, what are their purpose?
Monitor any action that goes on at Public Works that we would need to go back and or the landfill and look at.
And, and Eric, you, you are, uh, an employee of the county and, and, uh, you're non-elected. And so you don't have to have any discussions here. I want you to know that.
Okay.
And so I did, um, state and, uh, the, the purpose of the cameras, and not because I've spoke to Eric at all. But the purpose of the cameras is to watch and monitor and to, and to make sure that things are, are being done. And, uh, just like, just like a scaling process. I come in, I bring in this, that, and the other. I need to weigh. I need to unload. I need to, I just learned this. Go back and scale and then go unload something different, because it costs a different price. And then go scale. I mean, the purpose of cameras is to make sure procedure's being followed at all times.
And, uh, I mean, well, and, and that's what I was.
When you're not on site.
And what I was getting at, and, and what it was explained to me today, I mean, would, okay, so, so I won't, I won't. I was trying to put you on the spot, just as far as what, you know, what the purpose was, because it's the same purpose that, that we, we talked about today. It's to keep things honest, to keep things, uh, you know, and if things, uh, you know, because we've had some theft in the past, if somebody breaks into Public Works, you got, you got a camera.
We have a camera.
Right.
Which we've had to use.
Right, so, I mean, that, that's, that's all, that's all I wanted to get from you.
Yep.
So I wasn't putting you on the spot or, or trying to make you, you know, okay, so, with that said, um, and, and I learned today, and without I T. Here, uh, and, and I wasn't gonna try to put him on the spot anyway. But, but we understand that the monitoring of, of this is, um, for Public Works, you have access to the film footage.
Yes.
Okay, and here in the courthouse, um, they have that same, I, I don't know. I would assume that it's, it falls in the I D. High T. Department.
And I believe Dispatch has the same access, Dispatch has the same ac- access as well, I believe, is what I'm told.
So I, I, uh, I would like to, um, if I could, have, um, Brian Murphy come in. And, uh, I don't know, is Kevin here?
Kevin, I see you.
Yeah, um, I, uh, you know, when I, you can, you can stay.
Okay.
Okay, um, when I worked for the police department, um, as a detective, I was also the evidence custodian. Were you? And, uh, I worked as the evidence custodian, so there's a chain of command or chain of, uh, custody when it comes to evidence. And that's what, in, in, in any case on, on this, if there's a, i- if we suspect embezzlement, or if we suspect any, any, any wrongdoing of an employee, that becomes a criminal matter. If somebody breaks in to any one of our facilities where we have cameras and stuff, that also becomes a criminal matter. So for me, and that's what I was chewing on, and that's what I discussed with the sheriff earlier, later today. And then he's brought these two gentlemen, because this is his advisor. So what, um, I just want them to talk a little bit about how, um, systems like this work and where the monitoring of it and the housing of it should, should lie, because when you're gonna take it to court, it's very important to have that chain of custody.
The housing, what is this?
Yeah, where, where we keep, where we keep.
The data is stored.
So you care about proper procedure and that procedure's being followed, you, that's?
Oh, yeah, that's a big issue with court. If there's not proper procedure, then the evidence is moot until fruits of a poisonous tree.
What is, what is this? How is this a court thing, to make sure that everything's being done like it's supposed to be done at the landfill?
No, no, no.
I don't understand what is going on here.
That would be something criminal.
Okay, so everything that we talked about today was that, the, you know, the cameras are used, that if, if somebody breaks into Public Works.
I mean, I didn't talk about that. I talked about procedure.
Okay.
That's all I ever talk about.
Well, that wasn't what all was discussed in there.
Okay, but you can't discuss an executive session in open session.
We can if we're gonna put it to a vote.
Okay, um.
And I'm not discussing the procedural stuff that was discussed in executive session. What I'm talking about is that if something on these cameras is, is going to become a criminal matter, whether it's employee embezzlement or whether it's breaking into one of our facilities, then we need to be having a safeguard as to where, who has control over the data and who has control of, of, of where the data is stored. And all I'm saying, instead of having it be, uh, at, at the hands, especially when it comes to other departments and other elected officials.
Go, this does not have anything to do with you. Unless you, unless you are given an update, you can go.
If we have an issue with something like that, my first call is gonna be to the sheriff's department, and they will guide us through whatever issue.
Eric probably calling, watching and viewing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
I don't know what this is.
Send it to anybody.
I may be able to, but I would never know how to do that. I've had, uh, some things downloaded before, but I had to have I T. Do it for me, because I, I couldn't figure out how to do it, so.
I still think, I mean, and that's what I'm getting at, is that if it's a criminal matter, then it, the chain of how many people have editing capabilities, have viewing capabilities, becomes a question when it goes to court and you're gonna prosecute. Same thing when it comes.
Well, I don't know how to do it. I can't imagine how confused people watching this movie, this thing is, because I can't, I don't even know what's going on here. I don't know, I don't understand what we're talking about.
The only people that would have access to it to be able to change it, then it'd be I T.
Yeah, if I may, we had a incident probably two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, where we were approached by the commissioners at that time, not you guys, saying, hey, we believe that there's a crime being committed here. This was after the commissioners had already started their own investigation and not involved us. And at that time, I don't, and, and I still don't understand, but there was some footage that we weren't able to get. Or the, you know, I, there was just a big misunderstanding, and I think what David's saying is we have no access to the courthouse or any footage anywhere.
So do you need access? Is that what you're asking for? Is that what this is?
That, that, that our, uh, that our, the data collection of all of our footage.
Okay.
From landfill, from Public Works, from the treasures office, clerk's office, all that, rather than it be in-house.
Okay.
That it be housed at the sheriff's department, because that's where it's gonna go anyway.
Does anybody out there know how to do that?
They have their own.
I, I can tell you from what I did in Allen County, and we installed cameras into the courthouse for a gambit of reasons.
Okay.
Slip and falls, or this, that.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Not for overseeing production or anything like that.
Right.
And those servers were kept in my server room in my jail. It's, it's under locking key, it's secured. And the department heads, if they needed something from that.
Do we have online servers, or are we on the cloud?
No, no, we're not on the cloud.
We are online servers? Or we don't have physical servers, or we do? I don't even know what we have here.
Come in and talk to the I T. Guy, I think that's what we should.
So what would happen is if the department head, whoever it may be, had an issue, they would contact me and say, hey, on such a, such a date, hey, we met up. We come down and say, there's, look at whatever you need to look at. If you need to burn it, we burn it, and then give it to them. So if it's something past that, if they think we need to be involved as a criminal investigation, then they would let us know, hey, we did this.
Okay.
I'll tell you that there were some department heads say, hey, can you look at, where Joe Snuffy is, are they doing such and such? No, I'm not gonna look at the computer, Steve, they're on their email or.
But this all started as a monitoring of, to make sure that procedure is being followed, and that is not the same thing as what you guys are all talking about.
What I'm talking about.
But it jumped without like a separation here, so what I'm telling you, I had a hard time following. So thank you guys for.
Yeah, the main thing about it was with, with me was if, if, uh, my county attorney came up and said, hey, I need to see into the clerk's office.
Uh-huh.
Or I need to see in the appraiser's office, I'm like, you have no reason to, so we're not gonna allow that.
Good, okay, yes. Yeah, there should be some procedure there about what's allowed and what isn't.
Exactly. Unless you're gonna tell me a crime's being committed, I would not let you say it.
That makes complete sense, yeah. But as far as monitoring, there's nothing wrong with that. If you're, if you are a supervisor that's off-site, there's nothing wrong with that, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, the only hiccup is you wanna make sure that whoever the supervisors are, that whenever access they have is access to theirs and theirs alone.
There you go, yes, very good, yeah. But, but as, so we're on the same page. That is not a problem, is that right? Okay. Because you can't be at all places at all time, and there's no, no reason to.
The reason we have thirty cameras in our corrections facility over there is because we can't see every corner.
I ran doors there for a long time.
So there, you, you know exactly what I'm talking about. You can't see everything at one time, so you understand.
Got really good at that.
So that's basically what the cameras are for. In case there's something there, then we can always go back and pick it up. And my incident, my incident, the servers were in a, my servers were already protected inside the jail. So obviously nobody could get into them.
So, so you're proposing you move the servers?
I'm proposing that all, yeah, the cer- the camera servers, the surveillance all be moved to.
Do you have a place for that?
Yeah, we have a survey.
Okay, okay. There, there, it'd be great to have a discussion and involve, to see what it would take to do that, or if it's even feasible. Or, or what, what, what kind of, you know, again, I know you're sick of hearing me beat the money drum, what kind of money would cost to do it? I know everybody's sick of hearing me say it, probably, I don't know. But, I'm sorry, David.
That's real.
It's hard to hear me say it.
Well, I know, and, and, and the reason why is because we, we, we spend money in, in some aspects, you know, offices and moving, moving stuff around.
I haven't spent no money yet.
Well, but anyway, we, 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 we all jumped on that bandwagon.
Oh, I didn't do that.
Uh, and we spend money on, uh, I mean, I don't know, because it's just gonna be taking digs. I mean, but we, we spent money on other programs, and, and then all of a sudden, when we start looking at something that, that, to me, this is, this is something that's gonna save us from lawsuits and, and other liabilities.
Yeah.
That, and, and really, I mean, outside, the same as moving equipment from one office to the next would be no different than moving this equipment.
There, the only thing that I, I think approved or voted yes on is, is inspection for the dam for safety and, um, the car for the sheriff's department, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so I mean, I, I, you know, uh, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna sm- make this here. Uh, I move that the county's camera surveillance systems be placed under the operational control of the sheriff's department, transfer all equipment and programs to be housed independently at the sheriff's office. That's my motion. Okay. Died for lack of second. Commissioner comments.
I move that we bring David's discussion, uh, to a work session if David would like to talk about it and more in-depth with more people involved.
Sure.
Okay, uh, you wanna pick a date, David, or?
Was that a second?
My second.
He said sure, but he meant second.
Let's go, we got pretty things boxed up on.
So you have June ninth, um, taken up, June sixteenth, June second, um, so.
Let's go June twenty-third.
Okay.
So that we don't have ten o'clock nights.
I, that is my bad.
No, that wasn't your bad, we all did it. We overloaded that agenda.
Okay, wasn't that?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
David Bauer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, Commissioner comments.
I'll, I'll go first, just so you guys can comment on my comment if you want. I wanna give everybody an opportunity. So, um, so for lack of better way to address, and you guys have done a very good job this week, I will tell you that. For lack of better way to address how our meetings run, I would really love to allow everyone the decency to have a private conversation about my views on, uh, this topic. However, we have to work within the parameters the office allows, uh, we all acknowledge that. I believe the motion to end, the motion at the end of the last meeting, um, was very distasteful for me. Um, I'm not speaking of the motion itself, but the tactic, to put it in the comments. I ask that items that anyone wishes to make a motion on be added to the agenda. If for some reason your agenda item misses the cutoff time, I believe it would be appropriate to then add it to the topic, uh, uh, on the agenda when the chairman addresses approval of agenda, in which we all did today, which is great. So by making a motion to amend the agenda, um, I, I'd like to reiterate, this would only be if it misses the cutoff. I ask that we do this for transparency. If all over, all other avenues fail, uh, they're tried and they fail. We could always wait until the following week. Uh, you know, if it's, if it's urgent to mention, to mention in our comments, we mentioned in the comments. Um, but for the, the integrity of the process, I ask that we are respectful of one another and add our items to the agenda. Furthermore, again, I wanna apologize, um, for my part in the, the long meeting my first week. I know I did have a big part in that. I, I know I added a lot of things to cover, and, um, so I've made it a point to spare you all and, and slow it down a little bit, so.
Thank you.
You covered my comments.
Okay.
So. Um, yeah. Because we're here to be transparent and respect each other on the table, and have meaningful conversation about the moves we need to make. So, we can't talk outside of here, but you can put something on the agenda and at least gives us a heads up on what we need to be looking for.
Thank you for doing that this week.
With that said.
I got something totally unrelated.
Okay.
Okay, um, I, from, my gathering is we have one candidate for District Four. Uh, nobody for District Five.
At this, at this moment.
At this moment. Deadline is?
June second.
June second, so I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, of course, newspaper guy left already, so, but I was just, you know, um, if you know somebody in, in those districts, you probably ought to be getting them out there and, and getting, getting it, uh, or, I mean, we'll be in a pickle come primary, and we don't have a District Five. Then what we voted for as people won't, uh, may not happen. And, you know, I think we need five, so.
As I witnessed the last several election cycles, people really wait till the very last minute.
Yeah.
So we'll just hold on, because there's, there's a lot of open seats out there.
Yeah, with the, with that being said, so, since you're gonna be at the hospital, I guess I'll do the radio show in the morning, unless Micah wants to step in.
It's all yours.
Is there anything that I need to say on the radio to clear things up for the county, for or just try to get people to go sign up to run for office?
You know, they, um, they, last I, I seen, they were still looking for people for, um, Freeman. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Talking about, yes. Are they still, are they still looking for nurses, and I think they got their doctors, but they need all the other support staff, so.
And you can, uh, repeat the meeting days again for the, the public hearing, when the, the Union Town Fulton, the Waffle Hall.
I got that written here, if you want.
And that their.
Yep, I'll take that.
Their, their meeting, regular meeting is tomorrow night, because that's a change. After that, I, you know.
Five fourteen, five twenty, five twenty-one.
And then five thirteen for the regular meeting.
Union Town Fulton and Fort Scott.
Memorial Hall, Fulton, I'm assuming at the school, probably?
Yeah, the school and the cafeteria. Yeah, the school and the cafeteria.
And then Union Town at the community building, I'm assuming. I don't know where else they would do it, Union Town. So, all right, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second, I'll second.
You, you can have it, David.
Thank God.
That's a tough one, yes.
Dear Bauer?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
We got stuff to sign.
Yeah.
Always. It's not over till the end.
Can that, uh,
Those are bringing us.
Freeman thing be sent to Renee Denton?
Renee Denton?
Denton.
Okay.
I imagine Susan's got her information, because she's communicated with her.